All right. Okay, it is seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order for the Minatrista City Council for Tuesday, January the, what? Twenty-first, I guess it is. I was just gonna say the twenty. I'll call the meeting to order and the first thing is the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Cheryl Fisher, the mayor. To my left are the city council members, Mark Vander Lindy, who is not with us this evening, Anne Hunt, who is one of our counselors, Arlene Donahue, Bob Christians, and a city engineer who is not here this evening. The staff, the rest of our staff is to my right. The city administrator, Mike Funk, the finance director, Brian Grimm, our city attorney for the evening, Sarah Santala, our assistant administrator, Mike Brony, and our director of public safety, Paul Falls. And of course, our superintendent, Terry Harstead, I don't wanna call you Kerry, Terry Harstead, who is also our city clerk. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. First of all, welcome to all of you. Thank you for coming out on such a very, very cold evening. But we appreciate that you are here. The first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion carries four zero. Next item is persons to be heard. I just have one name on here now. Tom Notch from morning here. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I was in here a couple of months ago and I just had some questions, you know, on how funds, you know, kinda came about for the Public Works Building and the Police Building. And I made a comment that they had taken funds, you know, from the park funds, the water funds, and the sewer funds. And then when I went down, and Cheryl, you said that what I said wasn't true, and Mike, you kinda shook your head like you were in agreement with it. I did look at the CAFRA report that was filed with the state. And it sure is very, very clear to me, and I can forward you these documents, but it sure looks like it, that a total of 2.3 million from the park development was a million dollars, from water improvements, 851 grand. And then from the sewer, storm sewer, I'm sorry, just sewer fund was 445 grand. So what I said was actually accurate. And it really, to me, I don't think you're treating people with respect when they go back and sit down and then you say what you said wasn't true. And in this case, it was true. And I think I should get an apology from both of you.
Well, first of all, I would like to know, I don't really actually recall what you said.
I tried to look it up too, but the LMCC doesn't have the meetings anymore.
I realize that.
Which I have an issue with on transparency too.
Yes, and certainly there is no intent to treat you with disrespect. I don't know who answered his questions. I don't know what questions you asked now. So if you wanna repeat them at another time, actually persons to be heard, you should come in and talk to our staff or come and talk to me about those things.
Well, I did, but the point is, when a guy sits down and you say, well, that wasn't right. And I looked up the info and it was right. That doesn't sit too well with me.
Well, I'm sorry. That's my apology. I would just say that I'm sorry.
Understand.
Because I don't really understand the whole.
And I have one other question on a financial issue. I've been seeing a lot of things going on now, you know, for the water quality issues here at the city. And I know that's not what we're talking about right now. But one thing I noticed, they did say that well two A was a real problematic well. And that was one that's over by Shirley Hills. It'd be just to the east of Shirley Hills. It was put in in 2011. And I believe there's arsenic, high level of arsenic from that well. And from talking to Mr. Erickson, who isn't here, they've been blending water from that and trying not to use it, is my understanding. And if that is correct, and that is in fact the well, I just have a question. Normally, when you drill a big major well like that, they have a test well that's typically, you know, put down first. They test the water quality and everything else. And my question is, if that in fact is a well that has the issues, and it's my understanding that it is, why wasn't that have found out, you know, when they did the test well and before we have like a big financial commitment putting in the major well?
I don't have a staff.
Could be I had the wrong info, but that's my understanding.
I'll ask that the staff address that or actually look it up. We don't know these things right by heart while we're sitting here. But are you saying Shirley Hills? Do we have a well at Shirley Hills?
No, I think you meant Hilltop.
I'm sorry. I mean Hilton, I'm sorry. I'm thinking grade school, Hilltop.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, my bad.
Okay.
But it'd be on the east side of Hilltop.
Right. See how easily that can happen?
I'm sorry.
So, all right.
Game Farm Road.
I have both of those and staff can take a look at it. If they don't know what it is right offhand, they can look it up.
Yeah, but my question is, if WSB was involved with that in reviewing the test well and looking at that, and if they just had us go ahead with it, it seems like we should be asking them some hard questions now. Why wasn't this arsenic issue found out or discovered when they did the test well?
Well, you're asking a lot of questions.
I do.
The engineer isn't here, and that's fine.
Yeah, I understand. I thought he would be.
You're speculating.
Yep.
So.
Okay. And the other question I had, I know they were looking at, I think at this point, they kinda gave a green light to WSB.
Who?
The city did, is my understanding.
For?
For doing a design on the water treatment plants.
That's correct. Council approved it.
And I'm thinking, it maybe wouldn't be the dumbest thing to maybe kinda pull the reins back a little bit 'cause at this point, from listening to the one meeting that I could listen to prior to it being not televised anymore, I did listen to it. And it sounded like the decision to go to a gravity filtration plant was made a little bit hastily, in my opinion. A pressure plant is a lot more, it's a newer technology. It's the way a lot of them are going now. And I don't think that that decision had enough input in it. It seemed like one of the things that drove it, they said, well, St. Bonnie's got this system, so if we merge with them, I don't know how likely that is, they'd have the same system. Well, that's not a good reason to go with it, in my opinion.
Your point is well made.
Yeah.
You're past your three minutes, you know, as we'd say all the time.
Can you just respond to that?
But he's talking to the council without our engineer to even respond, and so that's difficult.
Well, I thought this was a scheduled meeting and he would be here. That's, I'm sorry if he's not here.
Well, it's, our scheduled meeting really would've been on the holiday. And so then he has a different thing on Tuesdays, so.
Understand. Okay. All right. So, I mean, is there any possibility to doing a little more study on this before they get the ball way ahead of the car?
I'm sure we'll do a lot before we put the thing ahead.
All right.
Other than, you know, looking around and carrying on adds a lot of cost to it, so, but we don't wanna be mistaken either, so there's kinda two things. And you had something you wanted to say.
I was just gonna say that I think Mike has already scheduled this for February 3rd. We are having a work session to discuss looking at membrane technology and pros and cons of looking at that as opposed to the gravity feed.
Right.
And so we are exploring all options.
Right. And WSB, I mean, they're noted more for their roads and things. I'm not sure how deep that firm is, just in my opinion, on the water issues.
Well, I can tell you that there's been a lot of research done in the last two weeks.
Good.
By different council members.
Great. Well, God bless you guys for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Madam Mayor, I guess the one thing I'd like to clarify is, I know we might be blending two issues. I know he was referencing some of the items as far as the water funds and the park debt and the sewer. And I know we purchased, you know, some different parcels around that same time and we used some inter-fund loans until we didn't wanna decide more if we were gonna, you know, use some of the land for, you know, a water project. So I know, I'd have to go back and look 'cause Mr. Notch didn't ask me any of these questions and I would've gladly looked up, you know, any of this.
I think we're talking about stuff that we don't have all the right people. You are one of the financial members.
This all might be helpful to you too.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I can take a look. But yeah, and some of the stuff, yeah, it looks like some of the parcels where we used the inner fund loans and then actually.
Right, they were loans.
Put the money, took the money 'cause it's open space. Now, we actually use the park dedication funds for the vast majority of the properties. 'Cause I think we were looking at one point doing a water treatment plant or some sort of water or well on the property.
We hoped it would work on the Gale property.
So this really, I don't think has to do with as much the public facilities project. It has to do with some of the land parcel purchases that were done a little before that, you know, back probably, gosh, you know, '06, '07, '08, that type of timeframe. So I can take a look at that and follow up. But yeah, I know most of that property was paid for, if not almost all, but the majority of it was paid for out of the park dedication fund as open space, which would be appropriate, so. I mean, it is, it is open space, park space and, you know, in open spaces, so. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Notch. Next item is special presentations. First, Tony Hesberg from Eleven, talking about branding.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tony. Just to give you a little background information, I grew up in Minatrista, moved out of the area for a while, and then about 14 years ago, purchased a home out here. Eight years ago, moved back full-time, so, kind of a long time Minatrista resident. And tonight, just, actually Anne's a neighbor of mine and asked me to come in and give some thoughts on branding, 'cause Minatrista was thinking about doing a branding process. So I thought I'd just give some thoughts on that type of process and maybe some things to look out for to help the process become more efficient. So more specifically, how to go about branding or to maybe develop on-brand messaging? Because when people say branding, they might be thinking, oh, what's our logo, colors?
Sometimes we don't know what we're talking about. Most of the time.
And you know, we're, as a city, you may just need some on-brand messaging as a first step and then think about tactics to put that out. So I am the founder and owner of a company called Eleven. We do marketing interactive services. One of our specialties is branding. We've been in business for over a decade, have done all sorts of clients, but work with a lot of globally leading brands. And again, one of our specialties is not only how to establish the brand, but how to protect their brand. So you might be thinking, why do you even do branding? Especially, you know, some people, like they go a government agency, what is the benefit of it? And there's gonna be a big benefit, and it's really a source of truth. You know, it's used as a guide to future marketing and communication efforts.
Could you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could you explain the two between branding and marketing? Because if this is a source of truth, marketing is not necessarily.
Well, it is.
It should be, but.
That's a perfect lead-in to my next slide.
Okay, good.
So think of marketing, or a marketing campaign or a public relations campaign as a house.
Okay.
You can just go build a house, but before you do it, it'd be really nice if you'd be involved in architect and interior designer to help draw blueprints and plans.
Right.
So, you know, when you take it out of the marketing world, we tend to think of, okay, what you wanna do, the actual objective, to go out and communicate and have messaging. And maybe one of the objectives is to attract new citizens to Minatrista. Well, that would be done through tactics like marketing, that can include a website. It can include public relations, you know, local press, maybe local events to build some awareness. But before you just go out and start doing that, what most companies would do is, okay, we have to establish what our branding is. What is kind of our guidebook so that any efforts that we invest in, we know that they're on track? And so it's really, you know, in a non-marketing term way, I say branding is drawing up your blueprints, getting guides from your interior decorator, and then you build the house. 'Cause you can imagine, and we'll talk about efficiencies and observations I've made. You can imagine the inefficiencies of going and building a house without blueprints. And ironically, my company is, it's called Eleven, we're 11 years old now, and we've often been called in to fix branding exercises, gone a mess, actually. And a lot of times, these branding exercises, you look up, well, I think Brooklyn Park just spent, Edina, Woodbury, I mean, some of these branding exercises, they spend 70 into well above $100,000. And they're not that efficient. And a lot of times, people go through these processes and they come out at the end of it and they don't really understand even what they attain for going through a branding exercise. And I think the reason that is, I'll go through some of the things to look out for, a lot of it comes to alignment issues. Now, I'm gonna go back to, let's say you're building a house. And I didn't get agreement with my spouse on what type of flooring we're gonna put in, what type of, you know, cabinetry. And we build the house and there's a lot of redo work. And that's the thing, when I say alignment issues, part of the reasoning you would go through a branding exercise is to make sure everybody is on the same page, in agreement going forward for what the objectives are and then what tactics we can take to do those objectives. And beyond objectives, you know, what can we do and then effectively, you know, what can we really implement? Like you might say, for example, we wanna attract people to our community, let's really talk about the great Monmouth-Stonka School District. And we know that, you know, realtors in the area, back two decades ago, I put myself to call it, sound real estate out here. We would tout the great schools in Orno and Minnetoka. And we want Minatrista to be a part of that. Well, you can definitely do messaging around the school district, but you really can't change some of the statistics about the school district. So we look at objectives more on, you know, what can we really effectively do? Another thing we look into is, who are we talking to? So once you establish your objectives, what is this whole branding exercise for? And a big thing we need to do is we build audience profiles. So that might be the makeup of current citizens in Minatrista you might profile, but you might create some new target profiles, like we need younger families. And I'm speculating, all of us. But we go through and you'd profile the audiences that you wanna, you know, attract or send messaging to. Another big part of it is participation. And that's one you have to get down, I think, early on. And that's one too, that can be a big inefficiency, especially for government agencies and even large companies. Who's participating in the brand exercise? Who has, say, I was just out in California with a pretty big company and we got the board of directors and a lot of VPs together. And we said, okay, we're all gonna participate as owners of this brand. As soon as people started leaving the meeting, the CEO said, yeah, everyone participates, but what I say goes. So it's not only who's participating, but really who has ownership. Is it a group ownership deciding what messaging should be? Or is there somebody who has ownership of that? And either way, it can be, it can be a good philosophy. I honestly believe in, pick a small group. Let them determine what your objectives and your branding are. And if you don't like it, kick them out of the group. That seems to work a lot better than saying, oh, we're gonna have 50 people participate in this. So again, the benefit of the branding process and branding really, you know, and again, speculating, I don't know, you know, I'm guessing you probably aren't looking to redo the city of Minatrista logo. It's more about what kind of discussion points and messaging do we need to communicate out to the general public? And that is branding. So the benefit of that is if you determine, first, what your objectives are, what your on-brand messaging is, second. Third, look at the tactics. In the long run, that's gonna be a lot more cost-effective process for the city than trying to, oh, we're just gonna create some random message and random tactic here and there and then end up redoing a bunch of work. Getting alignment, again, that's probably the biggest thing we see in taking our larger clients through branding issues. You might think we're all sitting here on the same page and chances are, when you go through an exercise, you're gonna find out that's not the case. That's normal. But it's bringing that to light and then discussing really what's the best way forward so you can get agreement. Second after that is the messaging that you wanna discuss. And then after that, tactics. So you might find, you know, really what Minatrista needs is some press, talking to the local newspapers, maybe some social media, maybe doing an event that will get some media attention and some play on the internet. So we go through a lot of our proprietary branding process that we develop. And we really believe there's three key things to making a good brand. First one, relevancy. Are you relevant to that, those target profiles that you created? Are you speaking things that are of interest to them? I mean, you might find that, I don't know, Minatrista may have more acres of wetland than any other municipality, but that might not be relevant to attracting new people. Being authentic to who you are. In today's day and age, especially with the internet, people see through being unauthentic right away. Like it'd be great to say, yeah, Minatrista, we got a great little downtown with some great micro-ruries coming. Awesome, people would be really interested, not really the truth. People are gonna find that out in a matter of minutes. And then the final component is unique. What can the city do to make itself, if you are, let's say, we'll go back to the objective of trying to attract new residents, to make yourself unique from Orno or Minnetoka or Waconia? So that was really the three key things that if we can figure out how your messaging and communication can be relevant to your audience, authentic to who you are, and unique, you're gonna have winning branding. Last thing we pull out of the branding exercise is consistency. And again, getting consistency amongst the group and deciding who is gonna be the determining factor of that is gonna be the biggest thing to save, you know, time and resources in going through a branding process. I think the last thing we pulled up, I don't know if it'll come up, if you can click on that, just the words, that site might come up. I can just show you a couple, couple points. So, you know, my thought would be, if the city wants to do this, form the group that's gonna be on the branding committee and start kinda gathering some of this information over, what are the benefits of Minatrista? What are, oh, you know, we're gonna have to log out and stop through this. But, you know, pulling together, what are the benefits Minatrista has to offer? Do a SWOT assessment, strength, weakness, opportunity, threats. What strengths do the cities have? What weaknesses? What opportunities are there? What threats are there? And threats being, you know, other cities pulling in, you know, maybe pulling residents away. Building off these profiles, really profiling, you know, I mean, you have probably an agricultural segment. You probably have differences in, you know, homeownership from, you know, maybe people on the lake to people in more rural areas. And kind of establish those profiles of existing residents. And then of who you're trying to attract. When I say profiling, now look at demographics. Look at, you know, type of jobs that they're working at. Look at, you know, are they have children, family? And then start to list off for those profiles, what do you think their concerns are with the city and what their hopes are for the city? What do they want out of the city? And if you start to gather that type of information and then work through that and get it all on the same page, you're gonna, you're gonna find you can do a brand exercise much more effectively than going out. I mean, too many times, like I said, our agency's been called in after another, you know, client of ours now dropped six figures trying to get their branding together and at the end of the day, we're unhappy. So if you can get, you know, alignment on your objectives, who you're trying to talk to, that's really gonna help the process. So I think that was kinda it.
Very good.
If anyone at any time wants to see in more depth on the web discovery process, we have a process for bringing people through that, you know, usually take people out of half-day to kinda gather information. And another thing to maybe think about is past and future. You know, what things in the city have happened that really kinda changed the direction of the city and what potential things, I heard, I think they had a talk of maybe merging with St. Bonnie. Like that would be maybe a major change for the city.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for spending that time with us. We enjoyed it a great deal. Did you give us your website?
Uh, I did not, but I can give you a card.
If you just give it to one of the staff people, then we can all get it. I mean, some of you probably already have it, but it would be nice to have it.
Think eleven dot com, so.
Okay.
Give you a card.
Very good. Thank you, Tony. I appreciate it a great deal.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Moving along, the next item under our special presentations is the Gillespie Center Board and Activities. Donna Smith.
Honorable Mayor Fisher and Minatrista council members, I am Donna Smith and I'm here tonight with our Gillespie Center President, Jeanne Brewsted, to present our annual report to the cities.
Good.
The three-city mound, Minatrista and Spring Park agreement with the Gillespie Center has completed its second year. Your financial support was to help with operating expenses has allowed us to use donations and fundraising profits to build our growing endowment fund. And tonight, we are here to sincerely thank you for your ongoing support of the Gillespie Center. We prefer, however, to be called the Gillespie Community Center as we serve the needs of and welcome every resident of the West Tonka area, young and old. Our membership has been growing and currently, we are completing a membership drive whereby each new member receives a packet of information with the things in it like the events, a welcome letter. We have script fundraiser now. We have rentals, of course, Alan Elmas summer cruises, a hidden treasure shop downstairs, second-hand, very popular, open on Wednesdays and Thursday morning. There's a Gillespie Center lunch ticket in here and of course, our monthly Gillespie Gazette, of which each of you should be receiving every month. So we also want you to know that we have a receptionist at the Gillespie Center desk 40 hours each week, morning and afternoon, four-hour shifts. And we are especially pleased that Tuesday mornings, Arlene Donahue is there to greet our guests. And tonight, Arlene, we want to sincerely thank you for your dedicated service. Jeanne Brewsted is going to be next. And I did leave some things out in the lobby. We have coming up, blood drive at the Gillespie Center. We have our February menu out, $5 lunches, noon, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, no tax, no tip. And what else do we have? Oh, and the activities, I've got some activity sheets. So a lot of things go on. And Jeanne will tell you some more. Thank you.
This is a very interesting place. Can you address or will Ms. Brewsted address the endowment fund? Because our contract is based somewhat on that.
Right, yeah. And then the funding, the information, financial information you get comes from our treasure. And I think that's, comes every, you know, whenever it's supposed to go. I'm not sure how that works, but the financial information will come through our treasure.
Never been able to find the endowment fund though, so I'm gonna ask Jeanne about it when she comes up.
You can ask me, I don't know.
See? Hi.
I know that you get a copy of the 990s and that, in the 990s, it tells you how much went in. We put in 110,000 every year into the, the last two years that we've been on this contract, into the endowment fund and any other monies that we've gotten. I believe there's something over 300,000 in that fund right now.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to know.
Yeah. You should've gotten, I think he sent even a second copy. Our 990s are usually done sometime about in probably May, the year-end just closed. And I think Roger just sent a second copy of last year's, of the 2012s, to somebody here, 'cause he sent me a copy of them. I don't know who, did he send them to you, Mike? Okay. And you'll get the.
He can't talk.
Oh, okay.
Yes, he did.
Okay. And you'll get the new copies.
Okay.
As soon as the 990s are done. We have them, we have a company called MAC or a, I can't even remember what they stand for, what the acronym is for, but it's a company that comes in and actually does a semi-audit and puts together a 990s so that it's done professionally and.
Okay.
And done correctly. So however, however long it takes to close all the books and then to, for her to do the audit of the books and then the report comes to you.
Probably on the web too, if you go and look at 990s.
It's always on the web. And it's on the web of the, of the state. Also, you can go on the state's web too, 'cause it's published there too.
Good.
And I had a really cute PowerPoint already for today, but created it on a Mac. It showed on my PC at home, but evidently you have newer PCs than I do and it didn't show here. So you'll have to imagine really neat pictures up here as I talk.
Okay, we're imagining.
You're gonna imagine really neat things. I believe that it's the job of the cities to create an environment where people want to move to their city and then stay in that city. And they do this by providing an environment that accomplishes this. You brand it. I'll add Tony's little thing.
We had another branded, didn't even know it.
Yeah. No, I just added it. It's not in the speech. I think the Gillespie Center is a great help to you, to this community, in doing that job. We're involved in lots of things that the community does. We take field trips to all kinds of things that are around the area and outside of the area. The game farm road is one of the things that we go to out here. We go to lots of different places that we had pictures of. We are part of the spirit of the lakes. We have, we do parades, we do lots of community. We're involved in community things whenever there's a community thing is going on. We also have the normal things that senior citizen centers have. We have photography clubs, Farkel, beating classes, craft clubs, painting clubs, We have photography clubs, Farkel beating classes, craft clubs, painting clubs, three or four different exercise classes, line dancing, all kinds of things, normal things. We also do programs that display talents of our, of our thing. We have quilting clubs and sewing clubs and painting clubs and art clubs. And then we have programs where we show those different talents to people. Just recently, there was a talent where all of the senior centers from the area gathered and showed each other all the different kinds of clubs they have. We offer programs where speakers come in and tell our members or tell anybody that wants to come, not just our members, community people, things that are, you know, teach them new things. And we also have programs where they get involved and they actually create their own things. And sometimes, these programs create classes that we offer to our thing. We work with students in the community, students from the different, various different schools. Our Lady of the Lake and Shirley Hills are very easy just to walk over. They sometimes come over for activities, do activities with our members, and then often stay for lunch. For a while, we even had a grandparent, grandchild program where someone from early childhood came and did a program where us grandparents got to bring our grandchild. You would've seen a really cute picture of my grandson right now.
Oh, I don't know.
Playing with dinosaurs on dinosaur day. But we involve people from the community, bringing in all kinds of ages. We have entertainment. We have bands that come in. We have dancing groups that come in. We have singing groups that come in, all kinds of different entertainment. We try to keep the young at heart going on there so that we have activities where people our age can decorate or dress up and be, be young at heart. I had pictures of red, red hat ladies and all kinds of things going on, because they can come here and be silly and feel okay and feel in a group. We have a festival of tree. They come and we get, get you going in the spirit of the Christmas. We have several fundraisers that we do, because we have to match the money that you give us every year. Your money goes to paying our regular bills. And then we match that money plus ten percent and we put that into our endowment fund. And to raise that money, we have several fundraisers. We have sweepstakes tickets, hidden treasures. We have a boutique every, every winter. We have a golf tournament. We have Spirit of the Lake activities that we do. We have Monday cruises, thanks to Alan Elma's help. We have lunch and evening activities. We have a bakery. Probably the main part of our program or the thing that works the best or that makes it work is our volunteers. Arlene is one. But we probably have several hundred volunteers that make it go. As you know, we have, we have probably, I don't know the exact numbers right now, but it's between five and six hundred members usually that we are involved with. As you know, right now, we only have one full paid-time person and two part-time staff members. One that works on, one of our part-time staff members works on renting our facility out and one works three days a week to cook a meal. It's five dollars, no tips, no tax meal for us. Most of the time, everything else that goes on, all of the activities, all of the exercising, all of the craft clubs and everything are run by volunteers. We have garden clubs that run volunteers. We have quilting clubs. We have two different kinds of quilting clubs. One of our quilting clubs, all the quilts they make, they give to weekend for the various people that do things. In December, we have a hidden treasures, Santa's Hidden Treasures where kids can come. People bring their kids there and then we have DECA kids and, and Honor Society kids that help with it. And they take those kids into the back room and go shopping. And then our, some of our seniors wrap those gifts and some of the kids wrap those gifts so that kids can feel like they've spent a dollar and they bought something really neat for their mom, for their dad, for their aunts and uncles. We, we coordinate or work with various people in the community also. Christopher Banks with us has a spring fashion show every year. That's very popular. St. Bonny Fire Department has an Easter egg hunt every year. And I believe they have ten thousand Easter eggs and volunteers at our center fill those ten thousand Easter eggs with candy. And it takes several days and you would've seen a really neat picture of them filling those eggs.
You're right, no doubt.
Probably our most popular day is Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month. And that's when we have our classic country jam. In December, there were a hundred and fifty people from the community that came. People just come when they're ready to, or musicians come and they just want to kind of jam. And it's different musicians every time. There's a few of them that are core ones that come all the time, but the rest just come just to jam and just to do it. Of course, if I were to tell you everything right now, I was supposed to say if I was going to show you pictures of everything we do, we'd be here a long time and it's cold, you wanna go home, too. So, I'm not gonna tell anymore, but I want to say thanks. Without your support of the senior center, we couldn't do what we're doing. And what you're doing is you're helping to create a city to live in for the present, but you're also helping to, big time, to create a city to live in for the future. The future, right now, people, in, in my time, I got, I was lucky. I got to retire from teaching when I was fifty-seven. My children probably won't get to retire when they're in fifty-seven or at, at that age, because it's working out that it's not working out so well to do that. The times are changing and the ways of saving money and having money and using money, using your interest from your money, isn't working out well. So, they won't be able to volunteer at the Gillespie Center like I'm able to do as early. But we still want a community center. And Donna alluded to it. We don't really wanna think of it as a senior center. I know I tell the story often of my grandma. She was eighty. She lived alone in a house. She was a widow at thirty-one and she lived alone in her own house till she was in her nineties. But when she was eighty, we kept saying, Grandma, why don't you go to the senior center in your town and play cards and do things with the seniors? And her answer was, I don't wanna be with those old people. And that's still happening, you know? My friends and I will say, you know, why don't we go there and have dinner or have lunch? Well, I don't wanna go with those old people. So, we don't want it to be thought of as a senior center. We want it to be a community center. And we want you to all feel welcome to come there regardless of your age. You don't have to be, way back when, you had to be fifty to join. You don't have to be fifty to join anymore. You can join when you're ten. You can join when you're fourteen. You can join whenever you want. But we want you to come. We want you to enjoy the activities going on. And we, again, thank you for your investment in our center.
Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Brewsted.
I don't know that we did.
President Brewsted.
Thank you.
After the presentations, the last one is for the CAFRA Award. We're very proud of our finance department, especially our director, Brian Graham. So, are you doing the presentation this evening, Mr. Graham?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilman. I have a, really just gonna recap what was in the packet and then probably the, the main event will be flashing the plaque, I suppose, there at the end.
Flashing the plaque.
Or showing the plaque, maybe that's more, better term.
Okay.
But, yeah, so this is the, in the packet, what I attached on pages four through ten was the, basically, the correspondence we got back from the Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA. And we once again got our Certificate of Achievement in government and financial reporting for our year-end financial audit. And this is our eighth consecutive year of getting it. This is for our 2012 audit. We're actually just starting our 2013 audit process now. We had our new auditors, Clifton Larson Allen, out a couple days last week already. But the way, you know, we submit our report in, in June and then by the time they review it and stuff, we always find out later in the year. And this is actually even our 2011 plaque. Our 2012 plaque should be coming in February here, so I brought this more as a prop. But the main thing I wanted to do is, you know, thank the, the finance staff. So, Angie Bowle, who's our, now our associate accountant, and also Selene Hansen, who now has moved back to Oregon, but she was a big part of this. And then our new utility billing specialist, Dawn. We said she'll be involved, you know, with this, she's already started to be involved in this upcoming process. So, it's something that I've always felt very strongly about. I think it shows that the city goes the extra mile and we're glad that the city council's always been supportive of the city going for this award. I think we're one of the smaller cities when we get the list that get it. But I think the point got brought up earlier. I think it's, it's something that's very transparent. I mean, we, you know, part of the requirements of getting this GFOA award is that we have a bunch of additional statistical tables in our audit that people can go out and look at gobs of information or, you know, lots of information. So, and it's one of the, you know, the requirements, but I think it's, it's a helpful exercise because it provides that additional information, you know, to residents, you know, bond companies, et cetera. So, I think it's a, it's a win-win for staff, council, the residents. And the only other thing I'll point out is, we were, and this has been the case the last past several years, we were on page ten, nine. They have all these different grading categories and we're proficient in all areas. So, our, our report is, meets all the, meets or exceeds all the expectations and, you know, standards set by the, the GFOAs. So, I guess, I guess on behalf of the city, but it's, it's a total team effort. I guess we'll like to, I guess, present our 2012 CAFRA Award and accept it and we'll display it out with the other plaques in, in the lobby, so.
Well, the council would like to accept it. We're very proud of you and proud of our department. And so, thank you, Brian. And the council, we need a motion to accept it and we'll hang it up.
Make a motion to accept the CAFRA Award.
I second it.
Moved and seconded, that the city will accept the 2012 CAFRA Award. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion will carry four-zero. Thank you, Brian, again. Moving along, gonna go to the consent agenda next. Let me just get it up here. It consists of approving minutes before December 2nd. There are special meeting, December 2nd, regular meeting, December 16th, special meeting, and also a resolution approving agreement with Isaac Leaf. Am I saying that correctly? Leaf?
Life.
Life. For AV Production Services for one year. And all your information is in your packet, so unless you wanna pull something, I would like, you know, to have a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I second it.
Moved and seconded then to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion will carry four-zero. This evening, there are no public hearings and so we'll go down to the business items. A, which is approving the 2014 minute just to city calendar. Is that you, Mike, or is Terry?
Sure.
So, Madam Mayor and members of the council, in your packet is the proposed 2014 city calendar. Most of the dates are actually set in our city code. You know, there are a couple of things. When, when holidays fall on a meeting day, by city code, those are moved to the following day, so you'll see those reflected on the calendar. Also, there's two calendars in your packet. One is only city council meetings. The other calendar is everything happening in the city, so I did wanna differentiate that. You will notice that when the council originally set up the road committee, that was intended to meet quarterly, but we've been meeting monthly. And so, staff put that on the calendar again to meet monthly in 2014. In addition, the city council typically cancels public meetings close to Christmas. So, there is no city council meeting, planning commission meeting, or park commission meeting the later half of December. In addition, usually the, the council typically cancels the meeting in July, close to the Fourth of July. So, we, staff did that as well. In addition, the other thing that is on the calendar, the other change is there is, by city code, there would be normally a city council meeting the day before the election. But we need to set up the room for election purposes. In addition, the city council is required to meet to certify the election results after the election, between three and ten days following the election. So, the earliest you could meet to certify that is Friday. So, instead of making you come on a different day, I just simply moved that meeting to the following Monday. So, instead of having a meeting the day before the election, you'd have it the following Monday. Other than that, I think it's, I think it's pretty standard.
I just have one question and, and I don't, I maybe didn't look at it good enough. I know last year, and it was still part of the recession, and we didn't have meetings in the summer a little bit, and I didn't see that reflected.
Yeah.
We only had like one a month in July, August, or something like that.
Yeah, this, this past year, in 2013, we tried to go to one city council meeting a month in the summer and it seemed that the council had enough business that they needed to schedule a second meeting, so staff simply left two meetings in the summer. If the council wishes to change that, that's your prerogative. You may do that.
I don't know that we care, but I just didn't see it on there, so. All right. Is there anything else that you want to?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for presenting this. Are there any questions for our city clerk about our calendar? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I have a question. Park commission usually meets quarterly and not monthly.
Correct. By, by city code, there, the city code says they meet monthly and we cancel the meetings and have them only meet quarterly, but they are, if an application comes in, they do need to have that day reserved because they, there is some statutory. David Abel is not here to answer to that, but if there, if there is an application that comes in, then they would certainly hold those meetings more quarterly. So, we just have it on the schedule in case they need to cancel it if needed.
Is there a motion to approve then?
I make a motion to approve the calendar.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The motion will carry four-zero. Approving annual city council appointments and designations. Who is that? Mike, or you can't talk.
It's you, Madam Mayor. I'll just briefly introduce the topic. So, on page thirty-two of your packet is the resolution. So, at the end of the discussion, you'll need to approve this by resolution. On page thirty-three of your packet is the actual attachment to the resolution and these are the appointments and designations for you, Madam Mayor and Council. On the bottom third of the page is the annual designations, such as the depository, Electronic Funds Transfer Authority, fiscal agents, the data practices authority, the official newspaper, and the assistant we suspect. Those are more established, or those are recommendations that we have a staff to you, Madam Mayor and Council. The top two-thirds of the page is the actual appointments, of which those would be a discussion amongst yourself. So, what we have in the attachment that you see is the 2013 appointees. And so, I would turn it over to you, Madam Mayor and Council, for discussion on who would be appointed in 2014.
Okay, Council, do you wanna just go down them or do you have changes that you wanna make or what?
I thought the protocol was that we emailed things.
I tried that last year, but nobody wanted to do it, so I didn't do it.
Okay. So, I have talked to Mark Vanderlinde and we're gonna swap the watershed and he would like the Pioneer Sarah Creek.
Wait a second now. Okay, Vanderlinde and the watershed, oh, Minnehaha, okay.
I'm taking Minnehaha. He's taking Pioneer Sarah Creek.
Okay, got it.
And then there's no Lake Minnetonka Communications.
Cable Commission, right?
Well, it was actually called Communications, but it's cable here.
Yeah, minus this cable.
So, that's gone.
Okay, that's good.
So, we need to delete that. Does it have any changes?
Now, is it your understanding with Mr. Vanderlinde, then, that with Pioneer Sarah Creek, we should let Ms. Whalen know that she's not needed there? Is that the point?
Yeah, and I think I told Mike...
Okay.
...today.
Otherwise, it stays the same. Is that my understanding?
Right.
So, with those two changes, I would entertain a motion to approve this year's appointments, 2014. Pretty much the same as 2013, except for a couple. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion will carry four-zero. Next item is approving the park and planning commissioners. You listened to the interviews a little earlier. So, what is your pleasure?
Well, I think the planning commission, or the parks is, I think we should have both.
We gotta think of the planning first, the planning commission first.
Well, we can do both. It doesn't matter to me, whatever.
With the park, we only have two applicants, so.
So, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations to the two applicants.
But in planning, you had three, so.
Patty and Elise.
I'd like to see Mike Stulberg stay. I have personal reasons for that since I'm the liaison to the planning commission. Someone on our commission is sick and so I'd like him to take over. And so, I would ask that he would be reappointed. He's only served one term and a portion of another term, so.
Well, and I would like Patricia Thol to be on the planning commission.
I agree.
I agree also.
So, those two?
She's done outstanding job of her resume.
Okay, then let's just put them in there.
But I appreciate that Bruce applied. I, I had a concern about him also not being there for four months.
Well, that was my concern, was right away. I, I appreciate that he told us.
Yeah. Yeah.
But four months off, and the planning commission is not good.
And he also said that he'd be willing to serve in some other capacities.
Right.
And I talked to them about maybe we work in interest today, too, because we really need some volunteers, and they may or may not. And we have other openings that come up regularly, so.
No, I felt it was important, as honesty, of maybe the point, that he would be out of here, and he would be unable to serve in a four-month period. So I'm very, very, feel very strongly also that Patricia should be put on the planning committee, and I would be okay with also with Mike.
Okay. So our resolution then reads as it does, and on the planning commission, Michael Stulberg, Patricia Thol, and on the parks commission, Patty Dykowsky and Elise Vogel. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have a motion for that resolution then, please.
I so moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
The motion will carry. Thank you very much for applying, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving right along, though.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. If you could just chime in with what's left of my voice, so I can apologize for my voice this evening. Staff will be in contact with the, follow the people that applied, letting them know. Also be in contact with Mr. Hogland to let him know as well. And then for Patricia, since you're here, we'll be reaching out to you, particularly with the, any of the new members. Next Monday's planning commission meeting is a full agenda with the Red Oak Golf Course Development Project. Can you hear me?
Maybe you could talk to her about that, when you could talk.
So, we have the Red Oak Golf Development next Monday and the planning commission meeting. And so we will, staff will reach out to Patricia and the members to make sure we do some, get ahold of you this week, and get you somewhat acclimated to the new role for you and to the project. So you're, you're kind of coming into an important meeting next Monday, so we'll want to reach out to you this week.
Not a bad idea, if you can include Michael. Well, I mean, he's more experienced, but whatever. Okay, moving.
Hopefully we talk, I'll have a much better voice.
We can understand each other. We have one more item under business, item D, which is a resolution requesting land donation from West Tonka School District for the public purpose of constructing a water treatment facility. Who wants to take that? Or who is taking it? You, and me, and Bob, okay? Bob and I and Mike had a meeting with the school district, with a couple of their board members, and Kevin Borg, to talk about how we could best get our, there's about a half an acre of land that we need for a water treatment center. We really are, plan, we would like the school to donate it. They seem somewhat willing. We looked to find out what the worth of it is from the assessor and so on, so they do have that as well. They're pretty willing to do it. They would like to say, I think there's some hard feelings from way back when, when somebody denied them something a long time ago, and so they kind of brought that up. But at some point, would we reciprocate with, you know, they didn't, with a waiver fee or something?
What, did we deny them?
We didn't. We don't even know what it is. They just don't.
Apparently, at some point in time back years ago.
That'd be quite a while, because I don't remember it, other than a fee. It might have been a fee for something that they wanted to do, and then the council wouldn't give it to them.
And I don't know, I didn't, from that meeting, I wasn't able to really figure out either, nor was anything really said about what it really was. But whatever it was.
It stuck, whatever it was.
It's been a thorn in their side for a lot of years for some reason.
Pardon? The warning siren fee?
Oh, is that what it was?
It was a fee, yeah.
I don't recall what it was, but there was some.
But I think we can do up with that. Like I said at the meeting, we need to be partners, not adversaries. So we have to kind of mend our fences where we can, and they can, and so.
I think, again, as per the meeting, there was an opportunity here to be a win-win.
I think so, too.
Versus the way it started out.
Correct.
So I think we have an opportunity here to be a win-win for both the school and for the city. So I'm glad to see that they are now at point donating the property to the city for the purpose of improving the water treatment facility, of putting a water treatment facility in. Very happy about that.
Okay. Who is willing, then, to do a motion requesting that land donation? We have to make a formal request to them for it?
And just so I can clarify, I think they can whisper really loud. The, the purpose of the resolution is to at least give the entire school board our position. Because, again, the meeting that we attended, they have a school board meeting coming up.
It's tonight, I think. No, the 27th.
The 27th. And so this resolution, they felt would be helpful in conveying that message to the entire school board. At least the representatives that we met with seem to support the donation of the land, as Mr. Christians just referenced. But I think this resolution will go a long ways in helping the rest of the school board come to the same conclusion.
There's, there were some concerns or questions, and I'm sorry, I didn't get to really read through it. It was just prior before I left the office where you had sent an email pertaining to some questions that they had. Have they been all addressed to everybody's satisfaction?
I believe so, Mr. Christians, yes.
Then at this point, you need a motion?
Right, to adopt the resolution which requests land donation from West Tonka School District.
And for doing so, again, so I know, this will be then given to the school board for their meeting on the 27th. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to adopt the resolution whereby the city requests the land donation from the West Tonka School District for the public purpose of constructing a water treatment plant. So if there are other, you know, other comments or questions or anything, I would say all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion will carry 4-0. Then we move on to the administrative items. The first item would be a resolution approving the claims. Anybody have any questions about the claims?
Make a motion to approve claims as listed.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the claims and approve them as they were presented in our packet. Anyone else have any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion will carry 4-0. Then we'll move on to council reports. I have Northwest League and Planning Commission. We did go through that. Not too much. We have some things coming up for Planning Commission, particularly on Monday. Police Commission Communications Committee, which is tomorrow morning, and Rotary is, we are once again, planning Brew Fest. I guess we're still going to call it that, right, Uncle Brew Fest, for next year, about the same date, probably November 1st, I think, is the Saturday or something. So we want to kind of, it's early, but we want to kind of keep it in mind. And if anybody has any ideas or any help they want to give, that would be great. So then I'll move on to Mark's here. Anne, you have anything?
I have an LMCD meeting tomorrow night, and the Save the Lake banquet is February 5th at Lafayette Club.
February 5th. I don't know why that rings a bell.
No, at Lafayette Club, Save the Lake.
Yeah. Okay, Arlene?
I have nothing.
Bob?
Tomorrow at 11 o'clock is the meeting with the Mound Fire Advisory Committee. I've spoke to Mr. Funk about this. I will not be here, but he will be, I understand, he will be going to the meeting.
That is correct, Mr. Christians.
Thank you.
I wonder where you'd be going. Do you have another job?
I have another job.
Okay. Staff, it's your turn.
I'll defer to others for more comment.
I don't think we have anything to talk.
You have no comments. This is amazing. Could I have a motion to adjourn then?
I just want to, on the, our city council agenda next time, we're going to be talking about water treatment. Is that correct? Is that going to be?
On February 3rd, are you talking about?
I mean, February 3rd, yes.
Okay, yeah.
So we're going to talk about, I didn't see it on our special meeting or our regular agenda. Did I miss it?
That's correct. It's not listed, but it will be on the February 3rd agenda.
Okay, so I want, there's a lot of people interested in it, and I want people to know that we're going to be discussing different options and which way we should go on this.
Are we talking about the work session and the main meeting?
Well, is it going to be at the work session, or is it going to be at the main meeting?
Probably at the main meeting, I believe.
Okay.
Okay, because I just want to make sure. I didn't know if we needed to, you know, look at some stuff ahead of time before we made a decision about something when we got to the main meeting, so.
Well, I, actually, I think it should be on both.
I agree with that. There's been a lot of, I think there's a lot of controversy and a lot of research at this point that's already been done by the people. So I think it's important that.
And WSP is planning on doing a presentation, right?
Yes.
And we also need to talk about some financing options. I found some other things that we might, as a city, be able to apply for. In fact, Governor is, I think he's just increased the amount of revolving fund, drinking water fund.
I think it would be good, too, for that meeting, if we could have some of that stuff in our packets, because a lot of times we come to a meeting, and we don't have anything in our packets that show us what somebody else was thinking and who was checking this out. So that would be helpful.
And also, there's a USDA fund for smaller cities for water treatment that we need to look into.
Okay. Was there anything else on the agenda that you wanted to mention? Otherwise, I'm going to call for adjournment. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the motion is adjourned.
Do you want to keep this?